Today is July 30, 2019. This is the regular meeting of the Board of Education. We're going to start with a public hearing on a proposed update to the district-wide safety plan.
So since nobody here from the public is here from the public, that's okay. We'll still do it anyway. And we can, you know, we can discuss this here. What I provided to you, a total of four documents. One says 6.1.9.1 excerpt. Those are just the pages that have changes on them. Then you have a 6.1.9.1 revision one, which is the entire document. Those changes and highlighted, plus everything else that didn't change, especially for new board members or ones who haven't yet committed this commemoration so you know what's in there. And then also bound in your packets, 6.1.9.2, which is the elementary school emergency response plan, and 6.1.9.3, which is the high school, middle school, because they're in the same building. They only require one plan. As I mentioned in my notes to you, the chancellor ERP and the high school, middle school ERP are confidential documents. They are not foilable for obvious reasons. You wouldn't want somebody who was interested in doing some mayhem to know what route the kids are going to take when they enter the building, for example. So that is confidential information. The district plan is more generic and not specific to a building, so that is foilable. And in fact, we are required to provide state police and local police agencies with that plan. So you can see from the excerpt what items were recommended by the district safety team when we reviewed it in June with one exception. And the exception is the verbiage that is, I think, completely on page six regarding school resource officers. That's something that just came into my inbox a couple of days ago from our legal counsel. Apparently now every school district that employs a school resource officer or some other kind of safety officer or whatever is required to put a statement in their contract stating that those safety officers are not responsible for student discipline. I think it's coming from, again, I don't know this personally, but I think it's coming from a concern at some level of state government that SROs or other people who are either on duty or off duty, police officers, are in some way being intrusive and acting like police officers as opposed to school employees. So we have to have a statement that defines the fact that they are not responsible for student discipline and that the building principals are responsible. They can, the building principals can ask the SRO, you know, for assistance or for support, but they are not responsible for catching a kid doing something bad, meeting out any kind of discipline to that student. That's the purview with the building principals. So what I did was after receiving that in the mail, I think it was Friday actually, I asked our building principals to give me a list of the duties that our SROs perform. And those are the seven or eight bullet points at the top of page six. And then two paragraphs down where it starts with primary responsibility is the statement that defines that SROs do not have responsibility for student discipline. So that's the only thing that came up after the district safety team met. I hadn't even been informed of this new law at that time. So I take care of that. Everything else, I'm looking at the excerpt right now. Everything else in the yellow were the things that came up from members of the district safety team or that in going through and making some of those changes, I happened to see some other things that, oops, nobody thought that, we should change that. The other thing I wanted to mention, Diane brought it up earlier, if you read it carefully, and I'm not assuming you've read it this granulately, but if you were to, you'll notice there's a reference made to dialing 911 and 5911. All of our phones in the district, you can dial either of those two numbers. If you dial 5911, that goes to the building office, like the high school office, the middle school office, the elementary school office. And that will scramble the district, what we used to call an AED team, like an emergency response team. So, I mean, they're right here in the building, so they are going to respond more quickly than if we just called 911 and waited for an ambulance from New York Dutchess to get here, okay? That said, anybody can dial 911 from any classroom phone, and that will go right to the 911 center. The example I gave to Diane is if you're a teacher in the classroom and you have to look out your window and you see somebody walking with a gun, I know, well, but it does happen, right? I mean, we have that plenty of experience. Somebody walking across the back lawn with a rifle, I would say you're going to call 911 right away. The building ERP team is going to have little to do with an intruder with a weapon. So all the phones can make both kinds of calls. And the teachers, instead of having a whole list of different numbers to call, which is what was in this previously with the new phone system that we install, now basically 911 will get you whatever you want, either in-house for an emergency or out, you know, the 911 call center if it's something much more serious and immediate. So that's, just wanted to point that out to you. What else?
Joe, the substitute teachers get this as well?
Yes.
How is that?
We give it to them when they come in to register. You know, when we hire them and they come in, because they're not all here all the time or if they're not all here on the first day, we provide them with a copy of this. Now, realistically, can we guarantee that they've read it? And there's so many substitutes coming and going during the course of a year, hiring new ones, having other ones say, sorry, I got a job in the school district, so I'm not subbing anymore. That's a more difficult issue. But we also have these things available in the rooms too. So it's there. Somebody has to look at it if they need information on how to respond, but the information is there. So it's about as ubiquitous as we can make it. It's, they're everywhere, so.
I have a question about the 5911.
Excuse me?
The 5911?
Yeah.
So when they dial 5911, it goes to within the school?
Goes to the main office.
So then is there, is there protocol for who is to dial the next 911 to get the ambulance here?
Well, that would be, yes, that would be, well, what happens is when the response team is dispatched and each building has a group of teachers who have, they're trained in CPR, and they respond. And we drill that several times a year. You know, it's a drill.
Yeah, yeah.
Obviously, it's not the real deal. But, and one of the things that is part of the protocol is they assess the situation, they send someone
To them.
To get the AED. Excuse me. How did you get, you had to call that?
I just got certified for a stay. Do you need help? I can do Heimlich, I can get the AED for you.
I think I'm good.
Okay.
I'll work through it.
Okay.
So they dispatch somebody to get the AED and call 911.
Okay. So it's in that, that's part of it?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. So then at that point, it would be the secretary calling 911. It would be that person who ran down there to grab the AED and get it back to wherever the emergency is. And it could be anywhere in the building. So that's, yeah, that's the protocol.
Okay.
Anybody else have, yeah?
So then there's really, if you're doing 5911, there's actually a delay before it gets to 911. It's being decided in-house whether it goes that way.
Well, yeah. It depends on what the problem is. I mean, if there's a guy walking outside with a gun, you don't want to dial 5911, you want to just dial 911.
Right, but in this paragraph, it does say, one of the examples is a display of weapons. So I'm just wanting to get on to that. I mean, it could be a kid holding something that's not an emergency situation, but it also displayed weapons could be in this scenario you had before. So it seems like that would be just 911 instead of 5911.
Well, obviously, people have to make, the adults in the building have to make a judgment call.
Yeah.
You know, if there's a question, dial 911. I mean, it's not going to, nobody's going to yell at anybody because you dialed 911 instead of 5911. And, you know, we assume that the adult in the room would have a rationale for why they did this. And it's not, you can't do anything wrong, but some things that you might call 5911 are obviously, you know, you'd even need a, you know, an ambulance to respond. I mean, we've had situations where, you know, somebody's fainted or whatever, and, you know, in a couple of minutes, they get a low blood sugar or whatever. And then it's the nurses' call as to whether they should go to the hospital or not, but these aren't people who are dying here. But there's a judgment call embedded in this whole plan. There's no 100% right way to do everything under every possible scenario, but that's a good question.
Anyone else?
Anybody else have?
Do we have to close?
One of the thing that, I'm sorry, one of the things that came up, trying to find, it came up in the committees, you may remember this Diane, was a concern, and it's just, you know, this is something that may come back to you as board members at some point. We have now, we have this system where you have to ring the bell, and there's a camera there and a microphone, and the greeter should be questioning you as the ringer of the bell, you know, please share with me what your business is here today or what you're here to do. So especially in a bigger place like the high school, middle school, yeah, I'm here to meet with my child's guidance counselor. Okay, that's great. Come on in. There was a concern raised at that meeting that some of the greeters, because they know people, they're just automatically buzzing them in without asking them where they're going. And, you know, I mean, I can understand why some people feel, oh, I already, I know them, yeah, I'm embarrassed to ask them why they're here. So that's something, we're going to have to do some training with those greeters. So they ask the person in a nice, non-threatening way, you know, can I ask what, you know, why you're here to visit us this morning?
Oh, I'd like to add to that.
Sure.
What happened to me was I buzzed to get in and somebody came up right behind me. And I shut the door in her face. I said, I'm sorry, but you're going to have to do it on your own. So maybe you could also add to that discussion that it's one at a time or, you know, if somebody can't tag on the back of you.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great point.
I think it was also, you know, just having a common language in all buildings, just having a point to.
Yes. So there's consistency, so nobody feels that that greeter dissed me by taking a tone with me and, but when he went to the high school, they were really nice. And, yeah, I mean, they should be consistent, so.
And some parents think, well, they know me, but they don't, they don't always know you.
They don't know they're not disgruntled.
They don't, right, they don't know.
Yeah.
And, you know, you think they know, they don't know you.
So, but that's something, you as a board member may hear somebody over the broccoli at Tops complaining about, well, that day, what nerve, they asked me what I was, you know, what my business was there. Well, you know, we're living in a different age and we have to make sure we know. And not only do we need to know to know who's coming in or to make a determination, is that person spitting nails or are they, their normal pleasant self? Because if they have a question about admitting somebody, then their next step is, I'm calling the, or I'm going to the main office and asking them, you know, I want Mr. Kane to come out and talk to this person. They shouldn't be getting into an argument with somebody over this. But, and that's training that we've got to do with that group of greeters. And we will, but it's something you might hear about just because some people may be offended at being asked. Also, we want to know too, you know, somebody comes, yeah, I'm going to, and when they come in, they get a sticky badge, okay? So the greeters need to know if they say they're going to the high school guidance office and they make a right turn and start heading down to the district office, say, whoa, you know, that's not where you said you were going. I gave you a pass to go to the, or to alert somebody. This person told me they were going to the guidance office and they went someplace else. And they can't leave their post and start running around the school looking for this person. They're going to have to get Mark Berg or Ed Davenport or somebody else to find out if this person didn't go where they said they were going to go.
Do we maybe want to send out tweet slash Facebook post and bring it up in open house as like, just, you know, we, with our new video camera systems, we have, we're standardizing our visiting procedures?
It's excellent idea, yeah.
Something else that came up, it's not part of changing the policy, but it came up in that same conversation. Sheldon was going to look into the high school, middle school camera, there's blind spots. So he was going to look and see if that could be fixed, remove the camera, because apparently straight on, there's a blind spot. I don't know if you ever got a, you know, got a chance to do that?
Yeah, cycle back to Sheldon.
Remind me.
Remember that coming up, that it also maybe depending on the person's height, they can't always see their face, so you may have to step back a little bit or whatever.
It's to the side of the door, so I know I do it too. I stand in front of the door, not in front of the camera.
Yeah. All right, I will bring that to Sheldon, so that's his place. Okay. So that's basically, those basically are the changes. And the board needs to approve this every year, and then we need to share it with law enforcement. And we'll, we also will go over this with the staff at the beginning of the year. In particular, the building ERPs, they need to know where they go if there's a lockdown or, you know, an evacuation or whatever. And again, they should, but we need to refresh it for them every year. And we'll also be talking with the new staff, and we do their orientation on the last Monday in August. We'll go over this with them too, so they, we try to, we'll try to imprint it on their brains, so. Anyway, that's all I have, but it is a requirement that we have a hearing and we provide an opportunity for people who might want to make a comment other than board members, so we can close the hearing and then go back into the regular meeting if it's pleased the board.
You have a motion to close it, right?
No, I think you can just close.
All right, so close the meeting of the public hearing on the district-wide safety plan and open the regular meeting of the Board of Education. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 2 organizational regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All is in favor? That motion passes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 25 special meeting, board goals work session?
So moved.
Second.
All is in favor? That motion passes.
Did I make a comment about, no, that's right, I wasn't going to object to it being approved. I was just going to make a comment on this second, the special meeting with goals work session. I did, I did talk with Steve Jensen a couple of days ago, actually, it was late last week. And when he finally regained consciousness, we had a, we had a great conversation about it. Well, he was actually very excited about the idea.
Okay.
No, yeah, no, he was. And in fact, he and I talked quite a bit, and he agreed to draft up someone regarding him, a potential board goal, and he and I'll kind of wordsmith it and we'll bring that to you. But, yeah, he was, he was pretty excited about the idea. And he did not think that the use of Google is precluded by the use of Canvas. In fact, you can use Google within the Canvas platform, so he had some good ideas, which we'll share with you when we get a little further along in the board.
Did he get some ideas on percentages, staff percentages?
No, he's going to have to, yeah. The other thing is somebody had mentioned, I think, that they thought that a neighboring district to the north was using the same learning management system. One of you brought it up, I don't remember who, and it doesn't matter. So I mentioned that to Steve, and he called his counterpart in that district, and that counterpart told him, no, we don't use. We don't use a learning management system across the board, much less the same learning management system. So they're probably in about the same place we are. You know, some early adopters, some people using enthusiastically, some people not, some people with no interest in. So we'll have to, we'll put a plan together to address that starting this coming year. It's all, he also pointed out to me, reminded me, that it's one of the CDEP goals as well. So it's in the CDEP plan, and the CDEP plan was developed from broad-based input from the teachers. So it's not like we're pulling some idea out of the thin air that we want to jam down people's throats. In fact, it's been part of the CDEP plan for the last couple of years. There's a lot in the CDEP plan, but it's not like we're making this up as a new idea. The idea's been there, came from the teachers, so.
Excellent.
So anyway, just wanted to bring you up to speed on that.
Okay. Public comments, you know, public, we'll move on to reports and discussions, board committee reports, start with audit.
So the audit committee met on July 25, 9:00 a.m. The first item of business was an update from Mr. Burnell on the ongoing search for a new internal claims lawyer. Joe indicated that he had received five resumes for the position and had conducted interviews with four of the applicants. Joe indicated, Tom rather, Tom discussed the experience and qualifications of the candidates and then provided the committee with their resumes. There will be a recommendation with respect to the replacement at a future meeting. The second item there was Tom discussed the results of the recent audit completed by the New York State Comptroller. The audit was clean with no significant findings. The next item was that Tom discussed the upcoming annual audit, which is scheduled to be performed by EFPR group. In terms of the timing, it's still being finalized, but it's expected to take place in August or September.
Yeah, a couple, I think you have to push that one week. It was supposed to be like the second week, and now it's going to be the third week.
The final item was an update from Tom on the administrative staff audit currently being conducted. A discussion ensued, and there being no further business. The meeting was adjourned at around 10:30 a.m.
Thanks, Matt. Any questions for the audit committee?
Can you remind me what Questar Three Bosse's is? It's like Westchester or?
It's, no, it's, it's like south of Albany, that Bosse's, that's right north of us.
Is Questar a town?
No, Questar is just a fancy marketing name that they came up.
That's weird. Sorry, I scratched that.
No, it's on there.
Yes, and I know, no scratching.
It's just named to say to call themselves.
Sorry, those of you, south of Albany. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for audit? Okay. Long-range planning?
So we met to discuss a lot of the enrollment data that Tom's been working on. You know, it's really complicated. Historically, we pick up 11 to 15 kids a year, some in CLS, some in middle school, and once in a while, some in the high school. So kind of looking at where we stand, you know, as these smaller grades move up into the middle and high school is a little bit difficult. It's not just doing a straight line projection. So there is a lot of finagling in the data. Tom will continue to work on it. A lot of kids take two Englishes, so it's not just taking the enrollment of a grade and saying that's the number of sessions you need. So it is a lot of moving parts, and Tom's going to look to work with the administrators to kind of nail some of that down. Just high level, 1296 was the highest enrollment we had, K-12, and that was 2000, 2001. We went down to 1100 in about a decade. The drop from 1100 to 1,000 was a little quicker. As of last week, there was 36 enrolled in kindergarten, but Mary Ann was out, so it may not be current. I hope that Tom anticipates mid-40s by September. So a lot of work still to be done by Tom. A lot of this report and data will be used in the administrator's audit end of August, and we're looking to meet in September once that's complete.
Any questions for long-term planning? Policy, those are mine, I think those were emails.
Did I miss any of them?
Those are emails, they're, I can do them.
Yeah, thank you.
We met yesterday and we, basically, we talked about the policy that you have for you today. We went over the revisions for that policy. And then we talked about the potential of a new policy that Joe was made aware of about voting, registering kids, pre-registering kids as early as 16 to register to vote. So we have to get more information on this because currently we, in senior year, they have the opportunity, and that's, that's the way we do it now. It's not really clear if it would have to be done earlier. There's a, there's some language in there that we have to look at, but, I mean, initially the only concern the committee had was that we prefer there be a class attached, in a class where they're learning what it means to register and the options that they have. So we wouldn't want that to stop because it has to be done at some other time, but more to come on that. And then we're just going to make sure that there's no policy that they need updating regarding the vaccine, vaccination exemptions. And that is it for policy. Any questions for policy? Okay, that's it. Okay, so board goal development update?
Yeah, so I already gave you some of that, and I feel pretty confident that we'll be able to bring a set of draft goals to the board for your consideration on August 13th when we meet. To the extent that you decide that they require additional work, again, there's, as I mentioned the other day, there's no timeline. It's really a self-imposed timeline. On the other hand, if the board is inclined to approve those draft goals, then we could approve them on the 13th and move on. So I think, I think we're going to, I think we're going to be pretty close to where all of you indicated that you felt too late to be, and I think we can have that ready to go in two weeks.
And will you send them out ahead of time if you have them, so we can?
It's my intention, yeah.
Great. Okay. Anybody else have anything for board goals? Okay. Good news.
Well, the Capitol project is moving forward. Anybody wants to take a look at the? Anybody wants to take a look at the condition of the Chancellor Livingston kitchen before you leave? I'd be glad to give you a very brief tour, but my understanding is that all of the removal of flooring that, that is, that contains or contained asbestos is done, so, I'm told the asbestos abatement part of the project is, is over, they've already started putting the new flooring down, it's not finished yet, actually, the library where we usually meet, that, that carpeting has been already put in there, and they're working up on the second floor right now, so they're, they're making, they're making progress, it's, it's dirty, I'm not saying that in a bad way, I mean, with all the work that they're doing, there's just a lot of dust, they've done a, I think, a fairly good job of containing the dust, even though it's not, you know, it's not asbestos particles floating around, but Sheldon was, was very emphatic with them that they need to be mindful of just plain old dust, and that we don't want dust, we're gonna try to limit the amount of dust, but it's, it's been disruptive, and it's been dirty, but, I mean, it's, we're chugging along. They're supposed to start the roof work over there, I think like this week or next week, that, that's the one that makes me nervous about when that's done before school's started, but I, you know, I, there's always that angst thing about, you know, is it gonna be done by, and there's some things that they probably won't be able to do, for example, they're supposed to replace all the windows in the district office this summer, they may not get to that before September 1st, so that's something that they could do after school's in session, that's not gonna, except for maybe moving the, the middle school play area for a week, it's not gonna disrupt instruction, so some of that stuff might get done after students are back in, but it's not gonna, there's not gonna be any reason we can't do some of the work a little later, as long as, you know, the weather's reasonable, so they're, they're doing a pretty, you know, there are, there's a lot of work going on, a lot of stuff, a lot of guys with hard hats walking around, doing a lot of stuff, but stop by someday if you wanna just stop in, and then you see all the stuff that's going on, and it's, it's nothing real pretty to look at, you know, it's not like when they're building a new room, and you walk in, oh, wow, that looks great, it's just like, looks the same as it was, only dustier, but it's, it's getting done.
Well, maybe that we waited so long for, but it seems like a lot is getting done.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, and there's a lot of worker bees running around that, that building, there's a lot of activity there, so.
And quiet, it's usually, but then it's been kinda quiet, and they, you know, it's too, so far, so good.
Yeah.
Old business?
I don't have any.
Old business, okay. No, still no public, no public comment, any others?
Still no public.
Some people come late, they come in the second.
I, I don't have any others.
I just wanna make mention of Kristen Kogle's summer work on 21st century classroom design and implementation, it's near and dear to my heart, so I'd encourage the curriculum committee to invite her to one of the meetings this year and debrief a bit.
Great idea.
Great idea.
I guess on your other, Whitney, are we all set for the conference, this new conference? Did we, did you get in on?
That was a whole other story.
But you prevailed in the end?
When you're sleeping back, we'll be fine.
Lots of places.
Quiet nod.
Under the bridge?
Under the bridge.
I didn't get right in the hotel, so again, it was another, they didn't know the way of doing it, so you had to register first for the conference, had to wait for an email back, and with that email, they gave you the link in order to get the hotel, so, a bunch of us were waiting patiently, but they did that email, and the phone number they gave you just would ring, so I finally got through an hour later, and then they're like, oh, yeah, we had problems, we were sending them to the wrong, yes, so they gave me the link, but by that time, I was down to my fifth hotel, you're gonna have to get a shuttle home with other people's, you know, there's a shuttle at least, but unfortunately, you're not right at the hotel, which, because I, I got in, too, I was 9:59, because it opened at 10, I was like, no, like I told you, concert tickets, I was on it, and I waited, and I couldn't get it, I was so frustrated, and the other districts, though, that they were, at 3 o'clock, still didn't have a hotel room, so, I don't know, they probably are bringing their sleeping bags, because there was like, and I know there was, I don't know, the district clerk website, they were saying they're trying to find other places for, like, sending more rooms, they don't have enough rooms for, I guess, all the people that are trying to get in.
They don't make it easy.
It's another experience, again, but thank you.
Where, where are we going again?
Rochester.
It's Rochester.
Anyone have family there?
Airbnb.
There you go. We could get a big house.
It'd be easy.
No, they really don't.
One of the excuses they gave was that it was Amazon Prime Day. They actually said that to Whitney.
So everybody was shopping instead of working?
What's that got to do with it?
How does that affect anything? Oh, my gosh.
The phone lines were jammed, because everybody was calling Amazon.
Or, or that's why we didn't get the email.
They were calling Amazon, that's what it was.
We were Amazon lines.
Should we use the phone for that?
That's okay. We got a hotel.
Yeah, you're not out of the airport.
There you are.
No, it's, I, you're not that far, but you still didn't take a shuttle, you're probably pretty long if you wanted to, but, you know.
I might do that.
Looked snowing by that in Rochester.
It's a cut bus.
Yeah, that's right.
No, see, no.
Sit in the back.
So there you go.
All right, so, action items. Motion on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Can you ask anyone?
I'm sorry, any, I didn't ask anyone, did anyone want to remove anything from the agenda? Any comments? I mean, as always, we wanna thank, do we have donations in here or?
Yes, yeah.
Yes, I know, grants. Yes, grants from the Science Foundation, we wanna thank them for their support, it's just the Science Foundation, yes, so as always, we wanna thank the, thank the Science Foundation for their generous support, all those in favor? That motion passes. Six point two, just tabled, do I have the English or just?
No, just tabled.
So six point two is tabled, we don't have anything for that.
Right.
Six point three, motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve as a first reading and consideration the modifications to board policy 9410, instructional substitute compensation, see attached.
So moved.
Second.
Comments? All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Sean Hogan as long-term substitute in the position of music teacher at the Rhinebeck High School, Buckley Middle School, effective September 1st, 2019 through June 26, 2020, at the pleasure of the board at a salary of Step 1 BA 55,796, in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for the 2019-20 school year, this appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the leave of absence granted to Laura Natalie, music teacher at Rhinebeck High School, Buckley Middle School.
So moved.
Second.
All those, any questions? All those in favor? That motion passes.
I have one very brief executive session.
So can I have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose?
A personal.
Particular employment of a particular person?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? That motion passes.